Good evening and welcome to the Curriculum Evaluation Meeting at 6:00 PM on March 21, 2022. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. We have in attendance Ms. Lamphier.
Yes.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
And I am here. We have a quorum for the committee. We also have joining us Ms. Paula Johnson from the Board of Education and Dr. Kim Sarfi from the Central Office. So we will jump right in and start our discussion of the professional development.
Yes, so I'm really happy to announce that we have a new data analyst. His name is Jonathan Foster and he is absolutely amazing. We've been working collaboratively every single day to compile data from across the district for many different reasons. We've been offering a lot of professional development this year at the elementary level. I also wanted to make sure that we are attending to the needs of our secondary folks. So what I did was I sent a survey out to staff members to find out across the 16 schools what areas of professional development they're most interested in. And depending on their responses, we kind of put, we kind of created these buckets. And so you'll notice there are buckets like literacy, social-emotional learning, dealing with mental health and mental illness, mathematics, professional development around serving English learners, and various topics. So Dr. McKinney and I have been working to make sure that we are offering some professional development opportunities over the summer. And then we're also looking at our ESSR funding to see if we can sort of map out with our coaches and with our principals and with our teachers when steering committees do resume, map out what that professional development will look like over the next year so that we can be sure to have sustainable, ongoing professional development for teachers from K to 12. And so what you'll see here, like I said, is these 10 sort of priority areas. And then based on that, we're reaching out to partners that we already work with and then also reaching out to our teacher experts because they're the ones who are the boots on the ground to figure out who it is that they want to collaborate with. What does the work look like? Which grades should we be focused on? What does our data look like? That's what we've also been looking into very deeply. And how can we move students forward?
Does anyone from the committee have any questions regarding professional development as move forward?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I know as I've been going through this packet, I've been asking myself some questions here. I know we're implementing new programs or updating. We also have a new superintendent coming in in July. Have we reached out to our new superintendent that's coming on board to see if anything is within his frameworks that he's worked with, that he's seen success with?
Yeah, and I think that's really important. So I sat down with our new superintendent, I believe it was March 18. Don't quote me on that date. And I'll be meeting with him again next month. And certainly the areas that we're looking at when it comes to helping to build foundational literacy skills, helping kids to read systematic phonics instruction so that kids are able to understand the code. We have some kids who might not necessarily need to have that systematic instruction, but the other 50% of our kids need that to be able to break the code to learn how to read. Those are all things that I believe our new superintendent is passionate about when it comes to helping our teachers with regard to math. I mean, we're using a line curriculum. We're using the materials that we already have. And that's a big part of the professional development that we want to focus on. So we have these resources that obviously we spent a lot of money on. And you know, depending on whatever your philosophy is, the reality is that our standards are the same. Our resources are here. And how can we leverage the resources that we already have to make sure that we're meeting the standards and we're providing kids with the best possible opportunity? So yes, we've had those conversations. And yes, we're going to continue having those conversations. I think globally, addressing issues like dyslexia, what does that look like? You know, for me, I was a middle school English teacher. I never heard about dyslexia, but I never received training. I never knew how to identify students who had dyslexia. What could I do to help them? I think that's, you know, that's one area where it's been universal. When I kind of put it out there to teachers and asked if they wanted to learn more about dyslexia, I mean, I really want to say everybody said yes. I want to learn more about that. Addressing anxiety for students, how do we help students who have suffered trauma? Those types of things are more universal. But in terms of that laser-focused stuff, definitely want to get more information from Mr. Linkus and kind of where he stands. I would say especially in the area of literacy because that seems to be the hot button right now. You know, there are people who are balanced literacy loyalists and then there are people who are learning a lot about the science of reading. And how do you marry the two and what does that look like?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep. I found it very interesting in this packet. You mentioned doing a very basic survey of the teachers. And the number one item by a significant margin with 56, the next closest one I think is 15 people submitting a choice was literacy. And I think that's so important at all levels because, you know, it's a foundation for all the other educational things that we're working on. So I'm glad to hear that. And I really enjoyed the presentation we had last week, I think it was, with the teachers who were showing the fantastic data-driven results they're seeing when they really came together as a team within that grade at that school, so.
Yep, that was Sam Hurst Street. Super proud of that, yeah.
Good, I mean, they had amazing results, so, and that's great. Okay, does anyone have anything else regarding professional development?
I have a question. So the literacy is the number one, you know, the number one topic that everyone thought they wanted development on. But does that show that more elementary teachers answered it? Or is this a concern that goes up through the school grades?
So I would definitely say it's a concern that goes, that crosses all the grade levels. But I will tell you that, I will tell you that I know, I know that the district adopted new literacy curriculum, new ELA curriculum just before the pandemic hit. And I think that the district did a good job initially of providing professional development, but then it kind of stopped. And then we had these two years where there was nothing. So teachers were handed these resources and then provided PD, but you know, the world turned upside down. And so I think they're saying, hey, you know, I have this, I have these materials. What do I, what do I do with them? I just don't feel that comfortable. And so that's a need that we have been responding to. We've been offering, in fact, I just looked, there's about, there are about 18 people attending a workshop right now addressing small group instruction and what that looks like. And people keep signing up. They're hungry for that. So we kind of did drop some breadcrumbs this year, get people a taste of what the PD could look like. The feedback has been really positive. And we just want to continue that sort of full throttle next year, but middle school, high school as well.
Okay, thank you. That's great, yeah. And actually, just before we move on, I also want to commend you for the professional development opportunities and the clinics and different things you've been offering that aren't necessarily on those days that are dedicated to that. And because you've had a fantastic response so far to almost all of them. So I'm glad to see that.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is AP textbooks.
Yep, so the first thing I just want to just to call out is that these quotes are for two different schools. So it kind of looks like they're duplicate quotes. I was, I was thinking I got them twice. And I had some questions as well. But one thing I can tell you, and you know, you have to understand that I'm also kind of getting this historical context secondhand. But in my understanding, these textbooks were approved last year. And I will tell you that when it comes to the college boards, the college boards require that the materials are up to date typically less than 10 years. I mean, Mr. Claffey shaking his head, I think he knows this, right?
I use, I, the books are 15 years old.
Right, oh, okay.
So if you have any questions about the old books, I'd use them, so.
So it's my understanding that these books were approved and in June, before I came here, books were ordered, but apparently it wasn't, they weren't the correct books. And so I guess what happened was the books were returned. There was about a $13,000 credit, give or take a few dollars. And then other books were purchased through this vendor. And then this year, you know, the teachers are saying, but we still need those materials that were never ordered. So what we're really doing is just kind of fulfilling this order. What I'll tell you is I've been very stingy with the operating budget this year. So we have money left over. And it's great because we're able to make these purchases. It's not, you know, it's something that should have already happened. But because we've kind of been a little bit stingy with our allocations and making sure that we reserve money on the other end, we can buy these books now. So we did reach out to the vendor. They are going to apply our credit. And we'd like to get those books to both North and South. I will tell you that the two ladies in my office, Melissa and Laurie, they did reach out to other vendors. And we could only find a couple of copies through Barnes &amp; Noble and also through Amazon. We couldn't find any other textbook publisher, if you will, to carry these texts. And then if you notice, there are other materials that aren't just textbooks. And they weren't available through anyone that we could find except for this vendor. So we did try to seek out additional quotes, but we weren't able to get all of these materials except for through Bedford Freeman &amp; Worth, who is this publisher.
Any questions? All right, so I guess we will go ahead and make a motion. I move to accept the quotes from Bedford Freeman &amp; Worth to purchase the AP textbooks as presented in the amount of $76,699.42 to be funded with the fiscal year '22 curriculum operation budget.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, and the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is ZERN.
Yes, so ZERN is a supplemental math resource that we use K to 5 right now. ZERN has been piloted in grades 6, 7, and 8. It is the only EdReport Greenlight curriculum and it has top-rated digital lessons to support instruction. I will tell you that ZERN is directly aligned with Eureka, which is our core math curriculum, grades K through 8. So the teachers at the middle school level are reporting that they've, they found a lot of success with ZERN. We have polled data. We polled preliminary data. And the data that we're seeing is very encouraging because we're noticing that in schools where students do have, they do have, what's the word I want to use? They have consistent access to technology. Those students tend to perform a little bit better than the students who don't have consistent access because of the fact that they are getting sort of like a double dose of that math learning. And so that's just a plug for some one-on-one. Hope I don't make any enemies by saying that. But being a one-to-one district certainly does have a lot of advantages. And this is one of those advantages. And so what you'll notice too is that there is a report from, a report from ZERN and it talks about the ZERN impact and how consistent use of ZERN helps us to reduce learning loss, again, by getting sort of that double dose. The one other thing that I'll say about ZERN is that, so during core instruction time, students, well, teachers will be targeting grade-level standards. And if students have unfinished learning, what teachers are able to do is use some tools that we use. They're specifically called the coherence maps for math. And teachers can trace the grade-level standards, the target standards back to previous grade levels to find out where the prerequisite knowledge is. And then if students have time to be on ZERN, teachers can set ZERN to kind of target those prerequisite skills. So let's say, let's say I'm learning about fractions in 4th grade in math. And I need some more help with maybe my number sense. The teacher can take the target standard, map that standard back to, let's say, 2nd grade. Clearly, we're not going to reteach 2nd grade to any 4th grader. But if we can be laser-focused and pinpoint where that prerequisite knowledge is and then program ZERN to target those standards so that by the end, children will say, oh, wow, I've mastered this. Now I'm able to move on to what that standard looks like in 3rd grade. And then you catch them up to where they're supposed to be in 4th grade. And it's laser-focused. And this is just one of those great tools that helps us to do it. So you'll notice that this quote does include ZERN for K through 8th grade. And we'd be looking for a motion for that tonight.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question. So this would be like, almost like extra work for the kids to catch up?
So not necessarily. I mean, so as a teacher, what I might do is I might have some whole group instruction. Maybe I have some students who have already mastered the work that we're working on. So then they would be able to use ZERN, which is directly aligned with our curriculum. It's not something that's separate, per se. Directly aligned with our curriculum. And I might, I might have that student work on a specific standard that they've already mastered, but maybe at, maybe at a higher level. So that way, you know, we're not just kind of doing more of the same just to do it. Let them stretch themselves. I might have students who, like I said, maybe haven't mastered the grade-level standard. And rather than, rather than just kind of, just beating a dead horse, that's when I would specifically target what, what they need to make up. Or maybe I want to give some students a double dose because maybe through my formative data, I'm noticing that we have students who are struggling mightily. And this is just one extra step. So I wouldn't just say it's just more. It can be very targeted.
Okay, so it's, this would take place in the classroom? It would be part of the day during the teaching? It's not?
So it could be, absolutely could be both. Students would have a login? I will tell you that when COVID hit, my son's school didn't offer any new learning for the first year. So I took it upon myself to teach my son 6th grade math, which he loved. And we use ZERN as our primary resource. And we, we went through the entire 6th grade curriculum from March till the end of the year and through the summer. So parents absolutely would be able to, if they wanted to have their students log in over the summer, to make sure that we don't have any learning loss or reduced learning loss, they certainly could log in.
Oh, that sounds, that sounds incredible.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yep. So you did actually answer my question. I was wondering how well it particularly aligned with Eureka, which is the primary curriculum that we're using right now. You said it does, and you can target specific skills?
Yep.
Okay. And, and does it grow? So I'm a little bit more familiar with ZERN at the elementary, lower elementary school level. How does it, do students still kind of like the game-style atmosphere at the middle school level? Does it seem to still be entertaining and engaging?
I would say it's definitely engaging for students, more so than some of the drier math websites. But it's not so game-based because there are some, there are some great math websites like Prodigy. My son loves it, but it's not really academic-based. It's much more games than it is math. This is certainly more math than games. But, you know, with, I think, a balance of both.
That's what we're here for, yeah. Not games. So, and actually, I'm really glad to hear that it says it was the only EdReport Greenlit curriculum, top-rated digital lesson. So that's really good. And I think our IT department double checks all of those alignments, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. And like I said, they piloted this year at the middle school and the, the feedback was really positive, which is why they want to just, you know, purchase it full-time.
Okay, excellent. So there's no more questions? We'll do a motion, all right. I move to accept the ZERN partnership as presented in the amount of $37,500 funded by the ESSR grants.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, motion passes. So next, we're going to talk about demonstrated success.
Right. Excuse me, give me one second to get there. All right, so here we go. Sorry. Okay, so one of the things that we talked about, like I said, is one of the things that we talked about was making sure that we're addressing the, we're addressing the literacy needs based on our feedback from teachers and what they're looking for. We want to make sure that we're addressing the needs K through 8. So what does that look like? I guess a big part of it is we want to find out from teachers directly, what is it that they need? And so what we want to do is when our, when our steering committees start to resume, hopefully in April, we'd like to be able to conduct a needs assessment. We would like for our middle school teachers to give feedback and to find out more about what kind of professional development they're looking for. We'd also like to hear from our elementary schools as well. What does that look like? What are the practices that are in place? What are the materials that we have in front of us to use? And how can we leverage those materials? I guess the thing that's really important is that we have teachers who are in different places in terms of their learning and their capacity. We have some schools, like specifically our Title I schools, that may have had more access to professional development than our non-Titel schools. And so we want to make sure that we're kind of making up those gaps with regard to teacher learning. The other part is that when it comes to the middle school, I don't know of any professional development that's happened this year that's specific to, I know that there's been a lot of like curriculum development and curriculum writing. But in terms of helping teachers with their instruction and finding out exactly what they're looking for in terms of feedback for their classroom and their students, that's something that we want to get more information about. The other thing is when it comes to our school administrators, we want them to be part of our conversations. We want them to hear the feedback from our teachers so that they know in real time what our teachers are looking for when it comes to improving their practice. We're hoping that we're going to be able to have more time with our elementary teachers during, during the day. Of course, not every day, but we're hoping to have more time with our elementary teachers so that we can provide them professional development that's embedded into their workday so that it's relevant to them. They don't have to do something extra. Right now, we have a lot of teachers who are engaging in professional development outside of their work hours, and I really commend them for that. But we also want to offer them PD that happens while they're working, while their kids are in front of them. The other part of that is that we are in the process of hiring a new literacy coach at the elementary level, hopefully. We found a wonderful candidate. We have interviewed quite a few candidates. And we recently found an internal candidate who is, has, was unanimously approved by the, by the committee and moved forward. And what we'd like to do is be able to support that person in her, in her learning and be able to help our teachers. And then also when it comes to the literacy coach at the middle school, the same thing for her. I mean, you know, it's one thing to have a coach, a position as a coach. It's another thing to actually have training on what it means to be a coach. What does it mean to have coaching cycles? How do you give feedback? What does that look like when you're a peer, you're not an administrator? I think some of those things, some of those responsibilities have just been, have just been thrust onto our coaches with very little training. And so we want to make the people that we have in those positions as effective as possible. And they're also saying, listen, I want to have some professional development because I want to, as, as great of a job as they do, they want to do an even better job. So that's another part of the partnership. And then finally, what we want to be able to do is we want to be able to offer even more intensive summer training for teachers who are interested. We do have ESSR funds where we would be able to pay our teachers to engage in the professional learning. Our preliminary surveys that we've sent out tell us that teachers are hungry, ready, willing, and able to participate in PD. We're also going to have, right now, we have a K Institute for our kindergarten teachers. And then we also have a new teacher sort of orientation for our new teachers. But we don't offer any sort of choice or institute day for the other grade levels, teachers at the other grade levels. And I'm specifically talking about elementary because that's my realm, right? So we want to be able to have an institute day for K 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And teachers, like I said, it would be optional for them to participate, but they would also be able to have a menu to choose from. So depending on what professional development they're looking for, just like our Teacher Choice Day, which was really, really positive and I think really meaningful for people, we'd like to do the same thing during the summer. So with that, we're hoping to partner with Demonstrated Success. And the other thing I'd like to say is Demonstrated Success is a provider that we work with from the New Hampshire DOE. So when it comes to all of our summative assessments, New Hampshire SAS, our interim assessments from New Hampshire SAS, and all of our modular assessments from New Hampshire SAS, Demonstrated Success is the organization that we, that we seek out and that we partner with to be able to help us administer the assessments, analyze all the data, and then inform our instruction based on that data. And so wouldn't it be great if we could even go deeper with them and then bring them into our classrooms and really work with us sort of on the ground with our kids?
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I was just wondering, would this be paid for with the ESSR grants as well, or?
Yeah, so. I apologize that there's no motion on here. We do need to have a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, but yes, they, this, this would be paid for by ESSR grants, I mean, ESSR funds, that's correct.
And the total price would be $43,500?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if no one else has any questions, I can make the motion.
Great. Any questions for anyone? Go ahead.
Okay, so I recommend that, that we accept the Demonstrated Success program as presented in the amount of $43,500 to be paid from the ESSR grants?
Second. And, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes. And our final item is the Worster Consulting.
Yes, so Carolyn Worster, I don't know if anybody has heard about her workshops. Carolyn Worster has been providing professional development to our teachers. She's been, the, the series has been called Math Empowered. And I will tell you that we've been offering workshops at least once a week, sometimes a couple of times a week. And the feedback from teachers has been so incredibly positive. I have teachers who have stopped me at Bicentennial at Sunset. And they've said to me, hey, guess what? I attended Carolyn's workshop yesterday and I did what she asked us to do today, and it was awesome. So based on that, and based on the request to continue our partnership and to kind of even go deeper with them, what we would like to be able to do is we would like to be able to offer a summer institute to our teachers. It would be a virtual institute. We'd also like to have, we'd also like to have some of our teachers be able to attend a math conference, which would be amazing. And the whole point of that would be like a train-the-trainer model. So we would have our teachers go, attend the math conference, come back to our school, and then share their learning, which is kind of amazing. And then in addition to that, we would have deliverables for our teachers. Right now, teachers are kind of working on their own deliverables and manipulatives for the kids. And rather than kind of create their own items, Carolyn Worster would be able to do that for our teachers. I apologize, I don't even know how we missed this. I don't even know how we missed this motion. But let me just add this up for you, if you could just give me one second. Sorry.
So actually, I have a question. We're thinking about it. So each of these items, so the virtual sessions, the in-person days, the coaches cohort, and then the summer institutes, those are all separate costs?
They would, yep, they would be all separate costs. So the thing is, if you notice, what we did, what we're looking for is, we're looking for a full day of in-person workshops for, for teachers, or in-person coaching in, in schools for teachers. That's why there are 12, that's why there are 12 sessions. And what we'd like to be able to do is kind of give teachers the opportunity to sign up, to work with Carolyn throughout the day for a full day. And we'd like to be able to do that, we'd like to be able to do that across all of the elementary schools. So that's where you see that number of $42,000. We'd also like to continue our workshops that we have after school right now. Those, those workshops happen around 3:45. It's really convenient for teachers because they can hop on Zoom. But if you notice, we expanded that. So right now, we've only been working K through 5. We'd like to expand that to, to grades 6 through 8 as well. Right now, there, there isn't, other than what our amazing coaches have been offering, there isn't any outside PD that's been offered to our middle school, our middle school teachers that I know of at all. The other thing is that we have three, we have three math coaches. We have one elementary math coach and two middle school math coaches. And we want to be able to help them when it comes to coaching the people that they work with every single day. And again, using the resources that we have so that they can help to move students when it comes to our achievement. If you look at our data, our data right now when it comes to math performance is, I wouldn't say it's just stagnant, it's, it's been declining since 2017. We traced our data all the way back to 2017, and it's been a steady sort of decline. And that's certainly not anybody's fault. Of course, it's not, our teachers are working hard. But what we want to do is help them to work, I hate using this term, but like, everybody says, work smarter, not harder, right? What we want to be able to do is help teachers shift the lift onto, or the load onto the students so that they're working harder than the students are. Quite often, we go into a math classroom and we know exactly what the teacher knows, the teacher's an expert. The teacher's an expert. But we want to see what the kids can do. And what does that look like? And how do we offer feedback to teachers and help them with their instruction? Again, nobody's been trained on what that looks like. So any one of us could become a coach tomorrow, but like, what does that look like in practice?
Will the in-person sessions with, under this new plan, will they be on Zoom, or will they be real in-person sessions?
Oh, they would be real in-person, person sessions.
And the commitment from teachers for the summer sessions, if for some reason someone signs up and is not able to make it, will we have to eat that?
Nope, so this is what I would do. So this is twofold. So we would only have, we would only have, we would only, we would only do this, we'd only do this based on, you know, teacher requests. But what I have been doing for something that costs a significant amount of money is basically drawing up contracts, mini-contracts. And, you know, what we've asked teachers to do is just commit. It's just a way of assuring that they're, they're really going to commit, and they're going to follow through with the training and follow through with, again, if they, we're expecting them to turn the information, they're going to be able to bring the information back to the schools. So I would draw up a little bit of a contract and barring any, you know, catastrophic events or unforeseen events. Obviously, we would work with teachers. But if they can't participate, then we would ask them to notify us in a timely manner. But the other thing is that we are only charged with, we are only charged for services that we actually follow through with. If teachers don't attend, then we can't be charged, especially when we're using grant funds. We're not allowed to pay for things that we don't actually, you know, services that we don't actually get.
Thank you, I appreciate you doing your due diligence because I see that there is real value in this, especially if you can bring these methods back to the classroom and kind of create that systemic shift. But there is some serious cost per person here.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yep. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Ms. Frekin?
So I saw that for the summer institute, it says neighboring districts' teachers would be invited if they were interested?
So that's something that I would be interested in doing to share the cost.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to ask you about.
Yeah, so I have done that before. Like, for instance, with Jessica Manahan and all of the workshops that she is delivering, I have invited some of our non-public schools to participate. And again, that would just be a way for us to share the cost. So I would kind of divvy it up, figure out what the maximum participant number is, how much it would cost per participant, and then reach out to our neighbors. I might even go beyond our non-publics, depending on the, depending on the space that we were able to secure. Like, if we were able to secure this room, for instance, I might be able to, to put something out to, let's say, Manchester or Merrimack. And then that would help us to, that would help to absorb some of those costs as well.
And you mentioned grant funding. Would this, what grant, would this be paid for?
So this would be paid out of the ESSR grant.
Okay. There's like, there's so many different things on here. Is it, is it ready for a motion, or is it?
So it is ready for a motion. I, I don't know how or why. We missed the motion on there, but I apologize. Trying to do several different jobs at once here.
Should you have a question, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. This comes out to about eighty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars, if I calculated it right. I guess my question, as you were talking about the math grades here. How are we, and what are we doing to really pull kids? I know what we're doing with literacy because we know by the time our students get to third grade, if they're not reading, we have that problem. You know, they fall further and further behind. But is that the same with math also? That if they don't grasp the basics by the time we keep putting them grade after grade, promoting them, that they fall further behind?
I mean, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't ever say that it would be too late. But I would certainly say that as those gaps widen, it becomes a lot more challenging. The other thing is focusing on our, our tier-one instruction and making sure that that's as strong as it can be, but also our tier-two or our targeted intervention. I think we have to do a better job of that. Because sometimes it feels like, and I know this as a teacher, sometimes it feels intuitive to give students more. Or, you know, if I have a student who's in sixth grade and who is struggling, and then I say, oh, wow, this student's at a second-grade level, and now I'm teaching that student second and third-grade math all year long, I'm guaranteeing that that student will never catch up. And that's something that's really hard. It's not intuitive to be able to figure out exactly what a student needs. And I think that's where the professional development comes, comes in. So right now, we know that we have students who have learning gaps, for sure, and more so than ever before, right? Because of the pandemic and a whole bunch of other issues. So we know that that's the case. But we can't keep continuing to teach down. We have to figure out, what does it mean to give every single kid an entry point into the grade-level content? And I don't think that anybody has figured out how to do that really well, except for those districts that have ongoing, consistent professional development with people observing instruction in a way that's non-evaluative and saying, hey, you know what, Paula? I love what you just did. That's, that's best practice, keep doing that. But it'd be even better if you would make this, this tweak with Neil. Here's how you could have reached him. And I think that's, that's where we need to get, certainly as administrators. That's part of the work that I'm doing at the principals and the assistant principals. And that's the work that we really need to do with the teachers. Because we're just, especially when it comes to the elementary level, we're expecting teachers to be experts in every content. And I don't know that that's even possible without a lot of training. I, I think everybody probably has an area where they are, they have a strength. And then there might be some people, especially around math, who don't feel as confident. You know, we've always had this belief that either you're a math person or you're not. And we know that that's not true. But what does that look like? Especially for those of us who have struggled with math. I certainly struggled with math. I think probably a lot of us did. So, I mean, I definitely, I, I agree with you, and that's what we're trying to do. We're not just arbitrarily just throwing PD at people. We're sitting down with them and saying, what do you need? What are we seeing in our kids? And really digging into the data. I wish I, I actually wish I had the, I have a data report for you all that I'll be presenting to you at Policy on April 11th. But I wish I brought it with you, with me now so that you can see the trend and the decline that we've been observing in the district. And we have to do something. We have to do something differently.
I'm glad you said that. But, you know, when you said that we can't teach down, and I'm always one of the people who say that we have to raise the bar. We do, because we can't dumben down these kids. We have to raise the bar. But my problem is, is that when the child hasn't mastered part of math or part of phonics, because when I was on the board, I fought to get phonics back into the system again.
Right.
Because my kids went to school with whole language. And I had somebody, a teacher, say to me, don't worry, Mrs. Johnson, your son's going to be a mechanic, and everything's going to be spell check on a computer. So don't worry if he makes a mistake with spelling. But words have different meanings. So that was wrong with what was said to me. And believe me, Mrs. Johnson was very happy about that. But how do we raise the bar? And yet, the kids that are below the bar, get them up. And you, you don't want to teach down, but you have to get them up. If they're not understanding the concepts, how do we get them up there so that when they get to the next grade, they don't feel like they're further behind? And we know that sometimes that's where behavior problems start because they can't keep up with the class. They don't feel like they're equal with their peers. And so that's what my concern is. So that's why, you know, I'm asking, following up on the question.
Yeah. No, and I, I appreciate that. Because, again, it seems counterintuitive. It seems like we should, we should be going down. But what I would say is this, this is what I would say. I'll give you sort of an analogy. If, if the goal for every child is to be able to run a mile, right? Like, let's say, run a mile in under eight, in under eight minutes. And we have students who can barely get out of the starting blocks. We don't say, okay, we're, we're only going to practice starting blocks. And you're never going to, we're never going to expect you to run. That's not what we're going to do. We're going to work every single day to build up kids stamina, right? To help them to be able to breathe better, to stretch their muscles, all of those, all of those things. Maybe we won't get every single kid to be able to run a mile in under eight minutes. But our goal for all the kids, I mean, anybody, any one of us who's ever coached, our goal is always the same. Different kids will be in different places, but we don't just stop running, right? We have to like, we have to build it up. And so, I would just say, in terms of following the research, the research says that we have to give kids who are, who have unfinished learning more and not less. But how do you do that, and what does that look like? That takes a lot of training. I mean, I worked in a turnaround district, and we, the elementary school that I was, where I was an administrator in Lawrence, I mean, we took a school from Level 5, which was, you know, the most underperforming school, among the most underperforming schools in the entire state of Massachusetts, to Level 1, which is among the highest-performing schools in Massachusetts, which is, you know, the highest-performing school district in the whole, I mean, state, rather, and the, and the whole country when it comes to education. But that didn't happen overnight. That happened with intense professional development and trust. People need to learn to trust us, and we have to build that trust. Like, we can't just expect that from teachers. We have to know that when we come into their classroom, when we say, we're not evaluating you, this is to help both of us learn. We need to build that up. I don't think we're there. I think there's a lot of work to be done. But there are pockets where I can see this happening. So we definitely have a lot of work to do. I totally agree with you.
And Walton, I can see kind of addressing what you're talking about and you're speaking about. Even this evening, we've talked about kind of a multifaceted method, focusing on professional development to help teach the skills and focus teachers on what they, areas of improvement, and also ways to lift up our students. And then also zeroing, using tools like Zern to help zero in on those building blocks of the things to help get the, you know, teach both grade-level content and direct the education for that extra work to areas that may have been missed or a little bit behind otherwise. I think that's, I mean, I like the direction you're going. And I think, obviously, you're thinking of it from multiple perspectives. So thank you for that.
I do just want to add, if I can, you know, Dr. McKinney has been alongside me this entire way. And he's the one who's saying, let's give teachers what they need. They just had two tumultuous years. They haven't had any professional development. Let's reach out to them and find out what they need. So I just wanted to make sure that I gave him that credit, too.
Well, thank you very much, thank you both. Any, yes, Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. I always want, do you think you can make this work without the in-person full-day K through 5? The forty-two thousand dollars? It just seems like for, I understand the value of in-person, but forty-two thousand for one day is a new teacher's annual salary.
Yeah, so I, I definitely hear what you're saying. What I would also say is that when it comes to our ESSR funds, we, there's a certain percentage of our funds that we have to, that we have to commit to helping students when it comes to unfinished learning. And I mean, I think certainly a big part of that comes from our instruction, right? And I would just say that, I would just say that the most meaningful part of those in-person days is when we have administrators who are following, in this case, Carolyn around. I know, because I was one of those administrators. And learning, learning from her, hearing the language that she's using, hearing the feedback that she's giving to teachers in real time. Another part of that in-person day is that what we would also probably have her do is model instruction, because it's really easy for me to say, Neil, in your classroom, this is what I want to see. And then I, as a teacher, would say, okay, Kim, show me with my kids right now. And that's something that Carolyn would definitely be willing to do. And I've seen that be very impactful. You know, I mean, certainly this, that's within the committee's purview to eliminate that. But I would just say that in my experience with this particular individual who is very much in demand across the state, I'd love to be able to nail down dates with her just because our teachers have already started to establish a rapport with her from the virtual workshops. And I'd love to be able to get her in to work with our teachers side by side. And the other part is, I know it seems like thirty-five hundred dollars for a full day is really expensive, because it is. I would like to make that much money, too. But when it comes to outside vendors, it really is, I mean, it really is, I don't want to say cheap price, but it's definitely more affordable than other vendors, for sure.
I just wondered whether it was a required piece of the package.
So it's definitely not a required piece of the package. It's definitely not, what I would prefer to do, I'll be honest, is offer 24 half-days. But I don't know that that's possible, because I know how in-demand she is. I'm not sure. But I definitely would be willing to, I definitely would be willing to see if it's possible for Carolyn to work with us and kind of manipulate those days.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, did you add this up?
It's, so it's, I got eighty-six, seven, nine, eight.
Thank you. Okay, well, this is a lot of money. However, I do think that, you know, the, okay, go ahead.
I was, how, how did you get the number if we don't know the number of participants? Maybe I'm just reading this wrong. But for some of the, oh, is this, so this wouldn't include any of the packs?
This wouldn't, um.
Thinking cards, that number.
Yeah, it wouldn't include any of the packs, yeah, yep.
But even the.
What's that?
I said I am.
Oh, you did. What did you come up with, Paula?
Eighty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars.
I was just wondering how you know how many packs they're going to order.
So we, yeah, sorry, we don't. Let me just double-check.
And we, how would we know how many attendees are going to go to the conferences? I'm looking at the in-person K22, and if it's 300 bucks per attendee, we don't know how many people are going to attend.
Yep.
But isn't this more like a request, like a purchase order type of thing that you're, that you're going to put in, write it up, that, based on?
So it kind of is. So what I'd like to be able to do again is I'd like to have, I'd like to do more of like a train-the-trainer model. So I, I, I don't know that we can have, I don't know that we can have an abundance of attendees, obviously. But I'd like to do more of a train-the-trainer model and have, I'd like to be able to send maybe our coaches to those, to those, to those trainings. And/or if we identify a lead teacher, like, I know that there are teachers who tend to be, some of our leads around the district. I'd love to be able to send, you know, one of those teachers and kind of feel them out and see how it works. And if we were interested in maybe expanding this the following year. But for right now, I just kind of like to see how it works.
I think if we write it, we could do, we could say it within not-to-exceed amount. Probably that would leave us a little wiggle room if it came out to a little bit different change when it was done. Yes, go, Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, I just want to understand the in-person conferences again. I'm just looking at the document. So two institutes are requested at a, at a price of $2.99?
So, so those are actually for, yeah. So what I, what I actually, what I actually put in here is I only put in for one, I only put in for one participant. You know why? The reason why is because I think I'm going to have some operating funds left over. And I figure if we have more people who want to go, I didn't put it in for the full amount. That's how I got eighty-six, seven, nine, eight. I just put in one for each one of those, each one of those conferences.
But you would probably have, oh, so you're thinking just the coach would go?
Well, perhaps. But I'm also thinking that I'm going to have some money left over. And so if there are people who want to go, I'd be able to kind of wiggle some money out of our current operating budget.
Which she wouldn't have to come and get approved, because she's already got approval for that in her own working budget.
Yeah, I mean, I'd want to send more than just one person, but I only put one person in here. That's all I did. Because I know that I'm going to have some money left over.
So maybe when, if it goes to the full committee, the full board, we'll have a more detailed.
Sure.
Breakdown.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, the, the amount, what I, what I'd be looking for today is a motion not to exceed eighty-six, seven, nine, eight. And then, like I said, if there are other teachers, because different schools have PD money, we have PD money in my office, we'd be able to send people. But that was just kind of, the $2.99 is, I mean, we don't even have to include that today if you don't want to include it. Just figured I'd put it in for one person.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for this, and then if there's more discussion, we can follow it up. So I move to approve the, it's not really a contract yet.
Proposal?
Approve the proposal, thank you. Approve the proposal with Worcester Consulting for Math Empowered in the amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. Not, I'm sorry, not to exceed the amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars to be paid out of the ESSR funds.
Second?
Eighty-six thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. Eight, six, seven, nine, eight. And that's not to exceed. All right, and Mr. Claffey seconded it. And yes, Ms. Johnson, you have a question?
So you'll have more information, it's not going to come before this board meeting coming up on Monday. So it's going to be future?
What's that?
It's going to be maybe in April, you'll have more information on?
Yeah, no, I mean, I can, I, so what I'm actually proposing right now is that we just eliminate, sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to have you probably amend that, is just eliminate those in-person conferences. It's okay for us to just eliminate it and then just focus on the other amounts. Because I will have money within our operating budget to be able to send people to those in-person conferences.
So that's the $239 and $319?
$299 and $299.
Okay, and that was in the amount of two. So you know what, well, yeah, we'll just keep the not-to-exceed and that will be fine. And you can follow up and let us know how many people go because I would be interested to know what kind of turnout you get.
Well, and that's the thing, is that I really can't predict. That's why I wasn't even going to include it, because I really can't predict who is going to be willing to do it. Because we're, we have, one of the things that my office was working on today is developing a summer calendar. And we have a lot of PD opportunities for people, which is awesome. And so I, you know, I'd hate to just predict and find out that my prediction was wrong in terms of who could attend.
And I have gotten, I was under the impression that you'd want kind of the same teachers or same coaches to follow through with the entire session so that they get the full experience.
Right, yep.
All right. Does anyone have any questions, comments? All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So, Ms., Dr. Sarfati, do you have anything else this evening?
Oh, thank you so much.
All right, anyone else from the committee? Anything? No? All right, so?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. And I'll second that. And all in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 6:53.